All right, this is the June 14 special meeting of the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. It is a workshop format, so the public will not have the opportunity to address the commission. Staff tonight is Paige Bronk, John Reiner, and Deb Jones. And Jeff Pritchard is the chair.
No recorder?
I don't think so.
All right, so I'll call the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Roll call looks like Barbara is not present.
She wasn't sure if she was going to be able to make it.
I see everybody else is here. Okay, well, we... Next item is our work... Old Business, which is our workshop for Mystic Education Center zoning text amendment. And did John have something to say to us before we start?
Yes, please. Good evening, everybody. I'm Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Thanks for coming along. So I just wanted to kind of set a little bit of a framework and start kind of the general discussion and understanding for how we want to move forward. So, you know, Deb and I have been kind of going back and forth a little bit about what is the best way to kind of move this entire item forward with the zoning regulations. And, you know, we don't have a formal application yet. We look at this soon becoming a town application for a zoning text amendment. And something that came up recently, I did just want to kind of remind everybody and put on everyone's radar once again, that although we don't have a formal, even town, application to create a zoning text amendment, we all just need to be aware of any conversations or correspondence that we get outside of Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, because we want to make sure that any conversations about this project or about the zoning, if it's indications or things that people are asking people outside of meetings, have them reference it to an email, to staff, to the commission, so it all becomes part of the record. We just want to make sure that any information that's coming anyone's way is all part of the public record and that there's no concerns about ex parte communication or anything like that outside of meetings. So I just want to make sure, you know, I know sometimes we might sound like we're beating a dead horse on that one, but it's always something that we're just cognizant on with all of our applications. So I wanted to kind of put that out there. So wanted to go briefly through, and I think kind of some of the format we're thinking about tonight, talking with the chair, you know, looking at just the general direction moving forward. The chair had put together a nice memo on discussion topics and, you know, workshop objectives. But one of the main points that, you know, Deb and I have been contemplating with this, based on the last meeting that we had with the commission, is really, how is the best way to move forward? And I think we have this general direction, but I kind of want to ask a few opening questions to get a little bit of direction. And really, the first one is, does everybody on the commission think that the zoning on the property should be changed? And if so, how should we do that? So, you know, before we kind of continue down the path we were going before, there might be a fork that we have to take, or maybe we need to kind of stop in the road that we're on a little bit. And, you know, I just want to make sure we're going in the right direction.
Great question. Are we going to go one by one down the commission on this one, Chair?
What I wanted... Did you have anything more to say, John?
Well, I wanted to kind of, you know, should the zoning be changed? Looking at the memo that I put together, some of them, it goes along, not exactly hand in hand with the outline that the chair had put together, but I think a lot of it, they kind of blend well together. You know, the first couple of pieces about zoning, if you want to change the zoning, the type of process we do with that, is it utilizing existing zoning or new zoning text? Talk a little bit about floating zones and the context, like what a floating zone does and why, if we go in a new direction, that might be the best way to go. And then, you know, talk a little bit about that process, and then kind of the parameters of a new zoning district, development stages, and then kind of next steps from there. So that's what we were hoping to get out of tonight a little bit. Not necessarily should the height be X or should it be Y, but setting the framework a little bit more again, kind of taking a big step back to make sure we're getting some consistent feedback from the commission, as well as going through those discussion topics that the chair had put together.
Okay. To get back to the process, I did lay out what I thought were an organization of the topics to discuss since it's sort of wide open area. And I thought the best way would be to take the major issues and try to get people's thoughts of, you know, looking at the thing at a 10,000-foot level and not down in the weeds, and go down our usual order, which is, I just use the... Listing of personnel as the order. There's nothing special about that. And try to make sure everybody's, or sort of has an understanding of what we're talking about, and then start talking about what are potential uses for the property. You know, starting off with almost a clean slate, and eventually getting down to more details of what the... What the development would look like. So I thought to start off, it would be good to just sort of have a brief understanding of what the property is we're talking about. You know, the size of the property is 48. There are two actual state properties. One is, I think, 240 Oral Hill Road, and the other is 8 Oral Hill Road, I believe it is. The big one is the 240. That's a 40-acre site. And the other one's, on the other side of Oral Hill Road, is just under eight acres. And looking at some of the constraints we have is that road access is sort of limited, based on, it's off of Oral Hill Road, which is a fairly narrow rundown accessway. However, it does have good access from a close proximity to the interstate interchange at exit 89. Also interesting to note is, the only road access is really north and south. There's no east and west access to the property. Adjacent properties, they're mainly residential on three sides, and on the riverside, it's open space. There are existing buildings on the property, two main ones that exist. There's also a waste disposal area that has to be taken care of. There's a big pond on it. The buildings are sort of run down. And from the, say, southern part, eastern part of the property, you have some pretty good views down the river, maybe through tree leaves now, but it is possible, because it's up so high, to see down, all the way down into the village itself. I don't know if anyone has any other thoughts on important attributes of the property that we should identify? If they do, you can bring them out now. And the next thing I think is, in part and part, is to start talking about potential uses for the property. That it may not want to be limited just to residential uses, but maybe specific types, or mixed uses, or certain other uses that could be done of the property. And I... Here, I think we ought to try to bring out as many opportunities as we can think of, so we don't miss anything that might turn out to be a good use, rather than just trying to limit it. Now, so with that, I'd like to, I'll start with Michael Kane. And just to go over what he thinks, and just go over what you think, our potential uses, that's sort of a general description. I don't think we have to get down to real details, but just general types of items. And then later in the process, we'll go down to maybe some of the parameters we want to... Or limits we want to put on the development. So I'll start with you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to address some of these things, and I'm excited to hear what other people are going to say. So I might want to contribute a little bit more after I hear more. But I think, I'll just try to answer some of the questions that have been raised, and that how I feel at this point, I'm sorry. I'm glad that we're like, you know, if we could start with a clean slate, that would be great. But I think that we need to, or that we can't, at least for me, ignore the current zoning that is there now. I think that would be, I think would be remiss to do that. I recognize that there are institutional buildings there, and there have been institutional buildings there historically, that the town has used those, and that if those can be used, I would be okay with that. Whether or not they can, that would have to be determined, you know, whether it's cost effective or practical. Certainly, the site is a good location. I think I have more questions than I have answers. And as far as attributes go, you know, you've got a pretty level surface to work with there, which is rare in New England. You know, I would like to think that maybe there could be some residential houses in a place like this. You know, single-family homes or two-family homes. I think that that would be appropriate for an area like this. And I think it would be consistent with what's already in that area. How many, and, you know, how dense it is? I'd like to hear what other people have to say. Leave it at that for now.
That is a good point on the zoning regulation, that we can leave it just as it is, which is RU-80. But move on to Hal.
I'll go the same way. We should be, I'd be able to say my bit and then be quiet, so it'll keep going around and around us. But I wouldn't mind actually, starting by, one thing I think we should discuss is stepping back even farther. Take the observation balloon up a little higher than we're thinking. Right now, we're saying, okay, let's just step out, look at a clean slate. But we actually just finished a townwide plan of conservation and development for the whole town. And so one of the things we need to take into consideration is how we want to have the town develop with regards to this. We keep talking about where downtown is, and we've got some other nodes. And are we, do we really want to change that right now? Or do we think the path we were on, and have a manual on right now, is defunct and want to change it? I just say that because, in round terms, I forget who posted it. It turns out, that the, how many people are where is not exactly what we thought it was. Mystic, both sides of, Mystic-Groton side is almost the exact same size as the city of Groton in terms of population. Who would have thought? Do we want to fight against that? I doubt it. That doesn't even include what we call downtown Groton, which has, just I came up with, it has about 1,700 residents in, 100 units in that area. It also has three grocery stores and a couple pharmacies, and many number of other things that Mystic and the city of Groton don't even have. So I don't know what we, how much we want to just change and should keep an eye out for. Just skipping over that and coming up with something yet new. Kind of a little uncomfortable with coming up with something brand new. In terms of what the zoning is, that's with so much stuff, the zoning is based on what was. Big open space. It was a big open space because the state owned it and didn't do anything with it. And we're thankful for that. But I don't want to do anything that's counter to the adjacent zoning, as opposed to what the zoning is there. That scares me a little bit less, just because one thing that keeps slipping on most of the things that, all the graphics that we keep seeing, is how much of that area of town is not available for development. Yes, a great big developed area, cleared area, you see, plus a little more, and everything to the west of it. No matter what we're talking about developing, an enormous chunk of the town on that corner is still going to be open space, no matter what we have, because the state isn't even turning it over. That's a good thing. So I'm okay with really rethinking the zoning. That's where the oral school is and to the left of it. But I'm not thinking at this point, based on what the entire town looks like, changing it dramatically from anything that already exists in that area. It's opportunities, I understand that, because it's a flat site. If there was a farm there, we'd say, great, it's a flat site. Doesn't mean, it doesn't make it any closer to a grocery store. There isn't one there. Doesn't make it any closer to a, in fact, it's almost three miles to drive to a grocery store in that location. It's not a good location for many residences. They're completely car-dependent. And we should envision that. Yes, you can put a couple little convenience things in there for it, but that's not the bulk of it. Everyone's going to be jumping into the car. This route, we have that building that people will keep talking about historically. You have a pool, you might have a gym, if it's cost-effective, which we can't lean on. I know that's one of the major drivers of this, is maybe we get a free pool out of this. It's not free. And as I understand, in fact, we'd actually be leasing it after the end, so it's not even close to being free. To the historic buildings, I don't know, I'd like to hear if anybody else thinks they're historic. Just old. Big old buildings, they'll cost many, many millions just to clean up, and then we might end up with something that we're, very, very difficult to use. So I'm not even that keen on necessarily keeping it, unless there's some piece, bits and pieces that add a little extra flavor to it. I don't know if there's any people here in the, have a connection to the deaf community. I really personally do not so much, as my daughter had an affinity for sign language, and then ended up with a little bit of it. And the oral school here was actually unique in being reviled by most of the deaf community, because they did not want kids to learn how to use sign language, and therefore, they're mostly cut off. This school didn't want them to use sign language. They wanted them to only use lip read, which is very ineffective for deaf people, unfortunately. They didn't want to give them the choice. So this was the school that went the wrong way, and they finally got out of it. But it does kind of fill out a favor. So it's not a great thing that started a great movement. It was actually sort of a misstep. And it wasn't the only school, it wasn't the only anything. It just was a school that taught the system. So we've all done the tour of it, and it's just a big old building, I think, as far as most of us concerned, occupying a pretty nice site. I kind of agree with Michael that maybe it could be used for other things. But I'm not quite sure what, because of its lack of services. There's no gas station up there. There's just nothing that's there that makes it a good place to put too many residences. Kind of the basis for housing is you put the people where the things are. And here, there's no things, we've got to come up with things. And we're not going to have critical mass if you see yet another 2,000 people, 1,000 people. I don't know what the right number is, having to get into their cars to drive to make it to McQuade's as the only grocery store to get there. Next person to talk now, it's about my general feeling. But I do want to make sure we keep the entire map of the town in mind, rather than just focusing on this one little opportunity. It's kind of our job to do that, as opposed to... Somebody makes an application, oh, there it is, there's their lot. I don't want us to make the same mistake and just think of this lot. This is a piece of the town.
Good point. Sue?
Thanks. In looking at this, I agree with Michael and Hal said. And I think that's how really things are set up. I mean, our plan of conservation and development, the P O C D, as it's known, and our regulations are clear, they're protective, and they're consistent. And starting with the P O C D and what this says, of course, it says the area is sensitive to development, the area of the oral school. And as we know, a large project was not contemplated in the P O C D, as you can see on map D-11, the full build-out. In the map conclusion, D-1, future land use, the P O C D marks the area as government facilities, institutional, and infrastructure. So, to me, you almost have to consider changing the P O C D or loosening it up or something to allow, for one thing, for the public to have input on what should this area look like? Because when we had that before, they came up with a different answer than what's being contemplated here. And we would potentially amend the zoning regulations to reflect these changes, again, allowing for public input. But, okay, moving from that, I think the current zoning regulations, and this was called before by Steve, I think, it's good to remember that the protective part of them and consistent part are right in section 1.1 of the purpose to promote the health, safety, RU-80 zoning as rural residential and meant to accommodate for family dwellings, agriculture, and related activities, and other lower-density uses. So to me, given this is what we have, the P O C D and our zoning regulations, and there's consistency there. And we don't have any other concrete information, as you would perhaps expect, such as they had in Perkins Farm, which is a similar type, I think, development, a different development for a large property. But they had a plan, they talked with the neighbors. They had a very concrete drawing of all this. They knew how many units, they knew what kind of buildings and uses. We don't have this, but we do have our existing zoning that we can work from. And I think we should first really look at the RU-80 zoning and see what could be done. I mean, when it was constructed, it was constructed, so it is consistent with the neighborhood zoning. And so I think, for example, you know, the setbacks and all that, the whole details of that zoning make it so it doesn't stand out like a sore thumb from the neighborhoods around it. I did ask the town staff to prepare a map, so I had an idea of what the oral school actually covered land-wise. I was just curious about both what we see now for the buildings and what has been torn down. And in fact, it was, it seems to me that the coverage they had there with those large buildings, at least area-wise, would have been consistent with the RU-80 zoning. But for the buildings themselves, as they are, I agree with Hal, that the buildings are just old, they're not historic. And because builders sometimes can come up with terrific ideas, even for things that are old and not historic, we need something concrete that spurs everybody to think about the possibilities. So whatever the builder, under something that's in compliance with our regulations as-is or as-adjusted, that would be an important first step. I think, let's see, what else I want to say? I think there's a lot, when you look at the details of what's allowed in this particular zone, there are a lot of general things that could certainly work with some of the people that were interested in developing the site, some of the other people, and maybe the current one, that there's an agreement with. But I think that's, I don't know how you would start anywhere else than with what you have. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Steve?
It's a full mute here. I liked John's question in the beginning, that was asking kind of the fundamental question, if we would change anything if this developer never showed up? And I don't think we would, based on a lot of the stuff that Sue just said. You know, this was not in the P O C D, and it certainly wasn't something that was screaming at us, that, you know, we've had other places in town that actually do scream, you know, on, I think it was 117. You know, we were always looking at that property, and there were various developers that came in, and they said that this is, you know, this is a place that development should take place, because it had easy access, you know, it checked all the right boxes for having easy car access, it wasn't near residential, it was already zoned properly. This, unfortunately, I don't think checks any of the boxes in terms of screams, you know, I want more development. So it's on your question about what we would consider good uses. You know, first, first and foremost, you know, residential. But that would, you know, I would certainly be agreeable to extending that to assisted living and, you know, various facilities like that. You know, small medical facilities, I think, would be good for that, which would not generate, you know, tremendous amount of traffic. R and D centers, we had talked about, you know, a small little, you know, research centers. And I know that these spring up in various places, but, you know, some kind of unification. And actually, who was there before in one of the buildings? Get the name.
It was a technology company, Steve.
Yeah, I forget, but they were leasing space in one of the buildings there for a while. And then, you know, data centers, which, again, you know, are popping up all over the place. So I think there's plenty of good uses that, you know, could use a piece of property that would have minimal impact on the surrounding areas. Still be, you know, tax revenue, maybe not a school, but I mean, certain other facilities would certainly be tax generators, and wouldn't have the negative impacts. Above all, you know, your problem is going to be that if you get into a big project, you're going to fundamentally change what's going on in a big portion of town. And there's no going back. And I certainly would want to err on the side of cautiousness on making any changes to the zone, to the zone, that would open the door to a lot of developments that we don't have control over then. That's up.
I'm sure. So like a lot of the other commissioners, I went back to some templates and some history here. And I started, similar to what Sue brought up and others, on the district plan of conservation. And I believe that since we've already set that template, anything we do to change that template needs a process redo. It doesn't need a floating zone redo. I believe we need to go back to the town of Groton and say, tell me fundamentally, is our plan of conservation wrong? And is that why we're doing this? And I believe that there needs to be very significant citizen input in order to make a change to this particular zone. Because like others, I don't see, and to answer part of John's question, there's no problem with the current zoning up there. with the current zoning up there. There's no need, in my opinion, for, um, dramatic change. And I haven't, um, seen anything yet why we need development other than up there, other than, um, a nice effort by the state of Connecticut to move a piece of property, um, forward. Um, but at the same time, um, I, I visited it, um, just this week to really look at the buildings and destroy what Hal said, to say, you know, and I believe there was an editorial about this in a local newspaper, um, how important are those, um, brick buildings, you know? And they're not historic, it's not downtown Mystic, it's not another fire district like Noank. It's a nice old building. And my belief, if we choose to move forward to the floating zone, I'm not opposed to, but the first embrace is the mission of the town, the whole town, the people who live around it, the citizen input that the town must garner first if we're going to change the, the plan of conservation. There are a couple of really good zoning changes in our particular area that actually Stonington did. And as Sue referenced, um, Perkins Farm, which I was, um, very involved with from, from the very start, um, the Greenway Development, you know, created a townwide embrace of that particular property. But it was created prior to that property being built. And if you all know, you know, what Stonington did with the Greenway Development, section seven dot two three, um, they got concurrence by a town to embrace a major change to what they did in their plan of conservation. And if we believe, which I'm on the edge of it, because I don't believe they're historic buildings, is that the mill building, whatever up there, we'll take a look at what Stonington did with their heritage, um, mill, um, which is four dot one oh in their, um, conservation. It allows a lot of flexibility what mu- must be done, but it's not an afterthought. It's not like I'm going to get something free. It becomes part of the community, like the Velvet Mill. So I potentially could see something like that, which I believe Stonington has done a great job with Velvet Mill. I think they've done a great job with Perkins Farm. So something that is very planned, as Steve brought up, that is part of the whole, I would support a great deal. But if you're not talking to the neighbors, and we think we're going to make a dramatic change of the RU eighty zone, that doesn't appear to be part of the mission of this commission, nor of, of Mystic. That's it for me, John.
I was looking at some more specific potential, uh, uses for the property, because it is one of the few large, large areas that's available for development. And there might be other, I just thought there might be other uses than just pure adding to some of the housing stock. And in, in the past, people have expressed concern over the, the changes in the population with the town and that it's aging, in that it might be useful to have, um, housing developed for an aging population, senior housing, or, or perhaps something that, uh, has support, uh, life support housing for elderly people, uh, that type of thing. It might be, I was wondering whether you could put a boutique hotel there, a small hotel, might be different, but there's so many other facilities like that around here, there's probably no advantage to doing that. Could put a convention center in. But again, it might generate too much traffic. Whatever we do, it, it has to take the traffic development concern seriously, because it, it's just not realistic to try to put something in that requires a lot of, uh, traffic going in and out of a, of a facility. You know, and you could have some small mixed use in there. I guess that the local neighborhood might support. You do have, uh, convenience stores that aren't too far away up on one eighty-four from Cow Hill Road. Uh, those types of things. And that you might consider that maybe RU eighty is, is maybe too limiting, but some of that thought was there, I, I believe because of, of, um, stores, and whether you want to get too much density in an area without that, but it can be served by, by sewage, town sewage. So you could increase it maybe to RU forty, or mix it up and, and sort of have different areas in the, in the property, different types of development. But I don't know what other, whether we want to go around again, or whether people have given it some more thought. But it sounds like there is some reluctance over changing the zoning from, from the RU eighty.
I think I, I spent, um, yeah, I spent some time, um, my favorite thing, the use table, and just going down, um, what was actually feasible. Some of it, I understand, is conditional and all, but, you know, they have entertainment or sports facilities, public recreation, adult daycare, childcare, uh, kind, different kinds of care homes, hospital, emergency treatment center, medical, um, certainly some other, um, type of, you know, light manufacturing, active senior housing. Um, so I think there's a lot of choices, um, nursing facility, residential life. Um, so it's not like there are no choices in the RU eighty, and a lot of these choices would have put some of the, you know, people interested in doing things in the last round. So, um, I, I do think it's something to consider, um, if in fact it is a, I mean, it, it sounds by the name of it, it's going to be very restrictive, but in fact, it does allow for a lot of pretty large scale developments.
Developments, you mean, would require large, large acreage?
Right.
But I don't think it's good to just cram a lot of new housing in that area.
Right.
It's not, not realistic.
A company like, uh, Precious Memories, that, you know, was always expanding, they would love that.
Oh, yeah. That's maybe too much acreage.
Yeah.
But if you could have maybe some, uh, recreational facilities, but I think we have to be careful that it's sort of the edge of the town and hard to get people there. If, if it's going to be a townwide facility, it's probably better to have it more centrally located.
I think I agree with that. I think the classic case is a swimming pool. Like, we have so much critical mass now with the schools, the middle school, the high school, senior center. Um, and then, of course, we have, I guess, a kind of a rec center. And there certainly are a lot of theaters around town or across the river, but either river. But, um, I think, yeah, a pool would be a really nice idea. Um, but it's just, it would be the wrong place in my humble opinion.
Well, it might cost more to rehab the pool than it would be to say, put it in the old Fitz Junior High School building.
Right. You're on some piece of, the town has adjacent to some of these other central areas.
Plus it has parking there, too. You know, and it might make more sense to, to look at the financial aspect of it, especially if we're going to pay for it by TIF.
I think this might be a case where fifty years from now, we would rehab that pool at great cost, uh, the pool in this corner of town. Generation from now, people who hadn't attended this meeting would think, what the heck were we thinking when we put a, a pool at that corner, when we've got, actually, we've got a dream situation with school and administration center and playing fields in the cent- in the absolute center of town right now. We've done a fantastic job of falling into that. And say that this is just completely opposite of that.
I'm French. I, I would like to just, uh, Hal, I think you're absolutely on track. I, you know, just historically, what we have struggled with on this mission for the longest time is defining Rotten's downtown. We, we didn't have it. But it, but actually, I think it's starting to happen, and it, and we're, we know it. It's the area between the library and the top of Ford Hill and, and the, uh, town hall is beginning to actually look like the, uh, the center of our town, and then we have the shopping district. And I think that this kind of development would be, you know, that there was high density, would be perfect in that area, or where, around the shopping centers. But it's, uh, I, I think what you, what you said before, Hal, was that this creating of a new node, which, and, and, uh, this idea of, I mean, this is the definition of sprawl to me. And I, I think that it's really trying to, um, create a part of town that, that wouldn't naturally occur unless we force it.
Means it fails in twenty years.
Well, I mean, the thing is, is that these kinds of things, I think that, you know, when you see parts of town that are so, so, so successful, downtown Mystic, you know, it's that mixed use, Noank Village, it's that mixed use. Hopefully someday Thane Street could come back. Those kinds of neighborhoods work, but I think for us to think that we're going to create that in a vacuum in the northeast part of the town is, you know, I, I don't know, these things don't happen because someone planned them. It's because people go where the things are, which is your things, Hal, they're, I don't, you know, that's what, people want to live near the things. And for us to try to force this, I think, is a mistake.
Yeah.
Jeff, can I ask, can I ask you a question about the history of the marketing of the property? I don't know if that's a Deb or a John question, but I, do we care?
Yeah.
I, I think we should not, I think we should not worry about the past, but where do we go from today?
I agree. I agree. Well, I was just trying to, just to see the, what was built previously, and why it was channeled to what we have right now down to this one developer. Um, I'm just, I'm just wondering, if, if it was remarketed differently, um, would we get different results?
I think we got a lot of different results in what's before that respond. I guess some really, some of them are very light adjustments to the property. I was, I was surprised to see that, but that was their business plan.
Yeah. But Jeff, you've been pretty specific. This is about the M E C, it's not about the developer, everything else out there. So it is a new slate, a new slate for us.
New slate.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we should just say, we are where we are and look forward, not look in the past, not care about what happened. It, it's what's the place going to look like in fifty years. And I think why downtown Mystic survives is because of the bridge, and that's the only way to go east and west in the area. And that's why it got created and, and they had a commercial area there. You know, and, and why it survived. You know, it's like, if you go look at, at Watford in the mall, you know, twenty years ago, that was the latest thing. Now look at it, it's going to go to nothing. And they'll be bringing in the, uh, building wreckers or turn it into a condo development, because it's not a natural location. There has to be something else that makes people want to, want to be there or go through there. And with the waterways around here, where a bridge is, you end up with population. I mean, that's where old Mystic was originally. It was built there because you, the water wasn't in, waterway wasn't an impediment to, to moving people. But it sort of sounds like the feeling of most people is that not have a large development in the site.
I agree.
I think it's unanimous.
I think, yeah. I think we all think something should go there, and I think it should get filled up with something, but not stuffed to full.
No, no, it shouldn't, it shouldn't, yeah.
And to your point, one of the advantages we actually have of, we call downtown, which is our commercial center, I'll call it between the grocery stores, is it actually funnels a lot of traffic from our industry. Let's go by how much traffic funnels through there, both from the housing standpoint and people getting off the highway and getting to where the housing is. It actually has a little bit, even, even without a train station, which still makes me crazy that we don't have a train station. But even without it, it funnels a lot of people through there, therefore it's handy, and it actually is an opportunity for something to happen. I would suggest being nearby a traffic exit, a highway exit.
Actually, I would say being near a highway exit is, uh, you could call it an attribute, but I think it also is a, is a way for people to just leave town. Well, I mean, you know, truthfully, when you head, uh, north on I ninety-five, the next exit is Stonington, right? You've left Rotten. And, uh, and heading south, you're, I don't, you know, I mean, certainly, I, I don't think the highway is the best way. If you want people to, 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 to live and, what, what is it, let, live and play and all this stuff in Rotten, the highway isn't the way to get there. I, I personally don't enjoy driving on the highway. I try to avoid it, but I think it should be, it, it, this kind, if you get a big development, it should be walkable, it should be bicycle-able, it should be public transportation, and we're force, force-feeding this thing, hoping that it'll grow. And I think that it...
I don't think you want it to grow.
So it's...
Just, just has some use.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so an appropriate growth.
Yeah.
If anything, if we're trying to, and, and that's part of our overall plan, is what designing does, is it encourages development in some places and discourages overdevelopment in others. I think we're already there, and putting something there is a place where we want to discourage overdevelopment. Want to add an extra two thousand units between the grocery stores, I think it can handle it. But here, not so much.
Not without altering the town in, in a very large way.
Right.
Whatever way that is.
All you're going to do is generate more traffic to, to either go to Stonington, to Big Y or to McQuade's, or down to the existing shopping areas in Rotten. You know, go to Walmart's or down to the Big Y and that area. You know, the, the other day I had to, I wanted to go to the Staples in, in Westerly, and I hadn't been through that area for a long time. And I was surprised to see how much has grown up between, say, where you cross over the, the, uh, bridge and, uh, Alcatlan to get down to where the, the airport road is, where they have a lot of shopping is. But that whole area is really built up a lot. And that's sort of happily developed. Interesting to see that. There isn't that much, I mean, there's, I guess the businesses in downtown Westerly are okay, but they don't seem to have a lot of, a lot of people or traffic, foot traffic there. Or it seems to be up on the one corridor. So, I guess we're really saying that we really don't want to either change the RU eighty or maybe make it slightly denser or do something and leave it as is, is what the bottom line is.
I personally could see it being a little bit denser, the, the neighboring neighborhood. The neighborhoods around it are a little denser.
RU-20, I think, yeah.
Right. And that, that's, if we wanna keep things in keeping with the neighbors, then that's what it should be. The only reason it's RU-80 is because it was empty. So...
I was, yeah, and there was sort of discouragement of, of the properties along River Road, I think that's...
Right. And in this case, we can, we can maintain not doing anything anywhere near River Road or even on that hillside.
No, it's all got open space.
Just slightly more, a, a little tick up on the developments level, um, along Allen Street or Cowhill. That might be fine. Still need to find opinions, but from what I'm hearing from the neighbors, I didn't hear them having a terrible problem with that. A few people just said, just leave it alone. But, uh, would not necessarily change much.
I, I would say that, that, that might be the case, given that it's sewed. You know, that, that the sewer, being sewed would allow for a little bit more density. But I think that also in the same, that, uh, the feeder roads to this area are, are, right, dangerous. Cowhill Road is, is very dangerous. And I think that have to be very careful about, you know, how much density is up there because it's gonna mean, uh, improvements and expense to the town if, if those feeder roads need to be improved.
Unless, that might be a good use of TIF for that, really.
But Cowhill Road to the north of the property is terrible. Cowhill Road south from...
I think it's just from the, well, th- those intersections are, are, would be a big concern.
Well, that, that's, yes. The intersection, yeah, the intersection around the highway is already hard. So we're already looking into that, I understand. That's, I already made a...
I think it's, uh, from the firehouse to Oral, Oral School Road, where you go over that lined hill.
Right.
That, uh, you know, is really, uh, a choke point.
Yeah, Mike, I, I knew, my good friend was the previous owner of the Adams House, and standing in the driveway, and he was backing out, and a car slammed into him.
Yeah.
Because he was coming up that hill so fast. And he came over the rise and boom.
Well, the road there is just about as narrow as can be. And I, I believe also that, I mean, there's ledge in that area too. So that's what that hill is. It's all, you know, I don't know. I would be a little bit, I could see more density up there because there's sewer. But I also think that it, that if there was, it would just be a little bit because, uh, you're talking about an area of town that, that hasn't developed, and I think for a reason.
Jeff, we have to give a redirect to our consultant who's writing words, probably as we speak.
Well, I assume that's what the outcome of what we're doing tonight.
Well, you know, so this is John, just jumping in for a second. Right now, it's just Deb, myself, Paige, no consultants of the towns are advising or sitting on this meeting right now. We're trying to get a gauge of where we go. Um, I, I think a lot of what I've gotten tonight is, without a change to the POCD, commission is not looking for any drastic changes to the zoning. Um, there might be some sense of changing it down to RU-40, but even that, I'm not sure. We really, just a couple folks have spoken about that. And now one of the potential option or path we could go on that we had discussed 12, 18 months ago was modifying the institutional reuse zoning text as it related to this pro, this property or just in general. That was a section of the zoning regulations that we did not get to when we did the larger rewrite. There might be some applicability there, but I'm also not hearing a lot of tenses from the commission that, or I think I heard it pretty loud and clear, that those buildings aren't really that important to the commission. So I don't know how important the institutional reuse would really be because the main purpose of that is salvaging and saving the older buildings.
When they had that tour, it looks like they're not very useful interior-wise. And I think they'd be very expensive to, to make them useful.
In all ways. I mean, just, one is that it would just be so costly to use, but just the layout of them and the fact that everything is a half a floor up or half a floor down, there really is nothing that, like, lends itself to a really good redevelopment. At least at the Velvet Mill, it was on, on ground level. And it works for a commercial. This is, doesn't have anything like that.
Well, we just, you know, with the building of the new schools, I mean, I could, a, a West Side School here in the, in Gro, in the city, seemed to me like it wasn't that bad of a building. You know, and it, it could've been worked with, but it proved that it wasn't. And, and even a building that was in good as condition as the West Side School, which was, you know, occupied right up until the wrecking ball hit it, uh, these buildings have been neglected for a long time. And I think that you're, I, I mean, I just don't know how, how they could be saved. Maybe they can be, but I, I think that from what I've, what I've seen in, in town with the schools that we rebuilt, it's very infrequent that, uh, trying to repair buildings that have been neglected like that for as long as they have is cost-effective. I, I don't know, you know, maybe someone could tell me otherwise, but I don't, I don't know how that works and how those buildings work. They, they weren't designed for, they were designed for small classrooms, you know? When you go through them, that's what they are. And then you're altering masonry buildings, which are poor condition.
Yeah, mills have a lot of open space, so you can do a lot interior with them.
Different kind of building. It was a different kind of building.
And they're sturdy too, because they're built for heavy loads.
But, oh, you know, a lot of times adaptive reuse of buildings, they're always a little kinda weird and funky. Um, you know, like the co-work space, the R and D, those types of things. But again, depends on what the commission's looking for up there.
I asked, it's gonna be very expensive to, to develop this area. Either, if you either have to rehab the buildings or turn them down, what's the problem with it? Cleaning up the waste area.
There is no hazardous waste left. All the hazardous material has been removed.
I think it has to be cleaned up, doesn't it?
The buildings still need to be remediated, and there, I believe, are still some waste issues, um, in relation to the dumping grounds that were on the property. There's still a substantial amount of cleanup that needs to happen on the property. And, and depending on which way you go, if you wanna remove the buildings, the cost of removing those is going to be substantial. And, and that, that's one of the tricky parts with this property. You know, I don't know if people have been, um, watching some of the news. It's been getting vandalized, graffiti. There's a lot of very unsavory things happening on that property right now. And some development of it, which is gonna have a cost of cleanup associated with it, is a number I, I don't even wanna put an estimate on right now, but it's gonna be, you know, many millions of dollars. That's something that'd have to get paid for somewhere.
Whatever you do with it, it's, you know, the starting cost is gonna be high. It could be higher than what the value of the property is.
Well, that's probably why the...
One dollar.
Selling the buildings for, selling property for a dollar is probably the correct price.
But it's really several millions of dollars.
Many millions of dollars. Yes, and then, I always say it's expensive knockdown building, but a lot of that just has to do with the cleanup work. But it has to be cleaned up whether you knock it down or not. But that part doesn't matter. Cause, I don't know, one reinforced masonry comes down pretty easily, actually.
I don't know how much that should influence our, you know, how we decide the zoning part of it, you know? I mean, that's not my purview, is determine whether those buildings are reusable or not.
It's up to the developer.
Yeah, no, that's it.
Allow it if he wants to.
I think that we, we need to focus on, you know, what our job in the zoning. And I think that if the buildings can be reused, uh, or repurposed, great. If they need to come down, then that, you know, either way. But I think that we have to recognize, uh, Reiner's, uh, point that something hopefully should happen because they're not safe at this point. But I, I don't know how we do that as a zoning commission. I don't think we can. We can just...
Well, by, by zoning, we could encourage keeping the building. But I'm not hearing that any of us thinks that's, there's any value to that.
Well, I wouldn't wanna mandate it either.
No, it'd be better to mandate it, but even to encourage it. I don't think we should encourage it. I don't think we care if that building's there.
Oh, I, I certainly don't, uh, have any, you know...
It, it should be up to the developers to analyze.
Yeah. I, I, I would just kind of, I've been trying not to say too much, but just listen to the commission during this. But demolition costs are a huge part of the property feasibility. And that's something that we really should be looking at, thinking about a future use on this property. It's gonna be a different property redevelopment. So it's, you know, the, the joint roles of the commission are, you know, the planning and the zoning. The zoning can help enable and encourage, but we have to come up with a long-term plan for the site that will help those buildings. If you don't want those buildings to be preserved, then what can the commission do through your functions as planning and zoning to help enable those buildings coming down that doesn't cost the taxpayers millions and millions of dollars? And that, that's the tricky part here. And, and I don't have a great solution for you. But I, I think that's part of the, what you've been tasked with grappling.
Yeah, but that's gotta be a development, developer cost to determine. If he wants to go estimate, you don't have the ability to estimate.
No, but you want to enable the buildings to actually, if, if you're...
Allow the reuse of them, if they can be reused, yes.
Well, there were, you know, there weren't three other people who bid on doing something at that property. It's not like there was just one person. And they were bidding on what was there and knew what they were facing. So, you know, it's not like everybody ran away.
What they were bidding on was keeping the building. They weren't, they weren't toward being said, what, here's my options. What's it cost to keep it as opposed to what's it cost to not keep it?
It was probably the more expensive option to rehab it.
I think so.
It usually is.
We did briefly talk about those two other proposals at the county council meeting last week. We gave them a little bit of an update on things and overview. And Paige could certainly speak to these a lot better than me. But the two other proposals that came in were not viable projects. That was something that was discussed. Nor, I mean, one of them required substantial changes to state law, the town purchasing utilities on a long-term basis. There, there were a lot of assumptions that didn't work with it. And the other project didn't have really a lot of details, and it didn't seem like a feasible developer moving forward. The developer that was chosen was chosen by the state as someone that could feasibly take a development project forward, not necessarily the development that they were proposing. So I, I don't wanna get too much about it. I think every time we rehash, oh, what about these two other people? The current person has an option on the property from the state. They are for all practical purposes, the owners. But we're also not trying to create zoning for a particular person. The point I'm trying to bring up is that if we don't create zoning or have zoning that enables for some development to happen at all, because if the demolition cost of taking those buildings down far exceeds the value of the land, the bill, the land is gonna stay in the state that it is. Those buildings will continue to be vandalized until someone, some entity of the town, the state, others, need to knock down those buildings. That's the point I was trying to make. That if the zoning doesn't enable, and the planning for that doesn't enable there to be enough profit made to take the buildings down, then without subsidy, the buildings will remain.
Right now, we only had a comparison of making it financially feasible to keep the buildings. We never examined about knocking them down. From our experience with the schools, as was just mentioned, it came as a surprise to me, and I'm, I'm, I should be, know better, that it was financially better off to knock down these usable buildings.
That's right.
Than unusable building. It probably, it might be cheaper to just knock it down and have a flat piece of land with a basement.
And in all those instances, you know, to take down Sealy, it was about a million dollars. And that or more, and that made sense because then they're proposing, you know, multi-family housing. It's a 20,000 square footish building. I think on this site, we're looking at about 160,000 square feet of building, so a little different order of magnitude.
Yeah. But we should, we should allow either one to happen. It's gotta be up to the developer to determine, does he have use for the building? And is cost-effective or not? And I don't think we should care. We shouldn't prohibit it or try to make it go one way or the other. Cause that's, that's only a cost thing, or the, the town might lose revenue for taxes, or you have to use TIF for it, or something like that.
It would've been nice to have an order of magnitude estimate done, just to know what's it cost to rehab the building, order of magnitude compared to what's it cost to knock it down. And just have the land available to build a heck of a lot more on it. That, that would've been a nice thing to have in our, in our pocket, so we know what to, to aim for. By having that, I just have to say, I agree with you, Jeff, is that, Jeff, the developer, we don't want to encourage him or discourage him to do either one.
Well, it may help with marketing to have an idea, independent assessment of what it would cost to knock things down.
Right. So for me, it's kinda like, you know, the, um, plan of conservation. Well, this is just another plan that we need in order for the town to make the decision. And without that, I think as Jeff and everyone else has articulated, we're not gonna offer up anything restrictive. We're gonna be open to what potentially is there. But we should not define that, John, you know? That needs to be the town and the citizens. We need to get that number. Almost like the plan of conver, con, conservation.
On the POCD, Kevin. That's the planning part.
I get that.
Okay.
But, but the, but the cost of, of an action, Jeff, if that becomes part of the decision, we need to capture that, right?
Well...
Us, the town needs to capture that so that some, we're not getting in this argument whether we should be doing something that potentially could facilitate without that number first being, um, viewed.
I think, Kevin, I think you're on to something in that, I think the more information that we can give a potential developer or the developer, it would be, and that would include what the zoning is there.
Yes.
And, and whether or not those buildings that are there need to be saved. You know, if, if, uh, you know, if someone can come up with costs for either one way or the other, or the developer come up with it, I think the more information that would be provided, the better choices we're gonna have. At this point, I feel like there's so many unknowns, it's hard for me to feel like I'm, uh, being forced to, to these decisions.
Well, the only decision we would make is, is what we want to allow, not ban, but allow for development.
Yeah. I think we're hearing it. I think a lot of the things that you said, Jeff, you know, and, and maybe even if the property were, were, uh, broken up in some way or defined differently, so it doesn't all have to be the same. You know, maybe there is room. I mean, we are building a lot of apartments in town, and... And uh that creates a lot of density and I I don't know if we want that kind of density in this area. Maybe there could be some single family or two family homes in that area. Maybe some of this uh institutional, you know, the things that that we were discussing. But I don't think it all has to be the same.
Right.
And the, and the property to the. But, you know, I mean, it certainly doesn't all have to be the same.
No, you could sort of divide the property up into different uses, different areas.
One thing that. Might be the only takeaway that I got from uh. A a very positive thing from the rental thing was the idea of doing a better connection to Cal Hill. To where it is, he had, they had one particular plan, doesn't need to be there, as long as it's south of the fire department, anywhere along there. That changes the feel of what can go in there. That's instant subdivision capability. And takes the weight off of worrying about Oral School Road being the feeders. Now that Cal Hill becomes something pretty normal and you can put a lot of traffic on there, the road is plenty wide enough. South of the uh. The uh fire station. Traffic lights are already in place. Still, I want to put too many there. I still think we should do something to fix exit eighty nine, or exit X eighty nine, but it uh. That pretty much by can bisect the whole property into some pieces that can be used better. And have a better route to the Oral School itself.
Well, that that could be, but the only, I mean, the issue there is that, once again, it leads, all roads lead to the highway.
That's true.
And and then, I mean, if if we want this kind of development or any development up there to benefit. I mean, I I would like to see something up there if it's going to benefit downtown Mystic. I don't want to see it take away. I think that that's what, that this is going to. Away from downtown Mystic in making the parking situation worse because. Any development up there is going to mean jumping in your car to get downtown Mystic. Not. Typical to think that people are going to walk from there or or even to ride a bicycle. It's just not going to happen. And so the other option then is. A big part of whatever we put up there is going to be getting on the highway and then we have no control over where they go. You know, if you've got an area that's got restaurants already or shopping, that's where you, I mean, that's what. I think from a planning point, that's where you want to put this kind of development. Where it can be. Corated. And you don't have to build all of these other things.
For slow development, it's not going to have a significant impact.
And so that's why I'm, I'm thinking, you know. The density should, or the, you know, the R, RU eighty, maybe a little bit less. But I don't see coming down so much that that we're um making the situation worse for the rest of the town.
No, you don't.
For all.
Maybe the RU forty would be the lowest you'd want to go. Yeah, maybe have a lot of open space to.
Well, or or uh, you know, open space development kind of a thing, you know, where maybe you could.
Yeah, you could use open space development. Over, but that would certainly be a good use and try to leave as much as open space as you can have.
I think we'd all. Well, the first thing, open space development seemed to work much better. Always big on open space development is just a better, better use of property. I I wasn't suggesting bringing that extra connection off of Cal Hill to help increase density. I'm still talking the same density.
Well, you still may need that, yes.
But you still might need that. Whatever you do there, anything we add to that area. Well, I thought small route is not a great way to get there, so I think that's still.
Oh, I think you'd have, you you should be realistic to accept the. Do a change to allow that to happen.
Right.
As part of the development. Makes a lot of sense, really.
It does. It does, yeah, I agree.
It would improve the development.
That's correct.
Without increasing or. Having unusual to density increase. I don't know if anybody has any, any new info, decisions or if we want to. Do you have enough input, John, to understand what the feeling of the commission is?
Um, a a little bit. I mean, I think what I'm hearing right now is. There we go down a course of a P O C D change, which is a much larger community driven initiative. And I think that's kind of one potential direction. The other is. Look at our existing zoning. Is it RU? Right now, it's RU eighty. Is it RU forty or RU twenty because it has sewers there now? And as part of that zone change, I know uh hearing definitely some infrastructure improvements that people would like to see such as roadway improvements. The connection to Cal Hill was something that was incredibly expensive. There might be some cheaper ways of doing that, of improving existing roadways. I I think that's the general direction that I'm here.
If we, yeah, if we call that, I don't know that we need a P O C D change for.
No.
If we go that route.
But, you know, we really can't require offsite improvements as part of a zoning pain, so that's one of the the tricky parts. When folks are talking about. Being through to have a better connection at Cal Hill. So that's uh, that that is one of the. You know, one of the reasons looking. Something broader in the floating zone with some of the improvement for offsite improvement, special permits allow us to do that a little bit with some offsite improvements, but that is somewhat limited. Think even if the commission, again, general direction I'm getting tonight, maybe an RU forty, maybe an RU twenty. How do we, how do we move that forward or do you just look to the developer to make that level of application? Right now, they are the developer, they are the property owner. If that's the consensus you're looking to go. You know, maybe the ball's getting put in their court. I move this forward. The town was taking a lead on if there was a crafting of a new zoning regulation, but if the commission doesn't want to go in that direction. And doesn't want to amend the institutional reuse, then I I think it's pretty clear how it goes and and it's a.
Yeah, we would entertain a. Don't request for zoning change to density.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the best way to handle it.
But again, to reiterate what John said, you would have to feel comfortable that the infrastructure that's in place would support that zone change. You can't require a widening of Cal Hill Road.
Oh, no, I.
Okay, yeah.
But, yeah. But. That if we re- would require the widening of the road unless the town did it, it would. Developer would have to bear the cost.
Now, if you change the zone, you are acknowledging that the infrastructure is there to support that zone.
I understand that. We have to accept it, right. This doesn't. Not accept the zoning change because there is no.
Correct. Well, you know, we're certainly not looking for a a vote tonight, but it would be great to have um maybe a little bit of a head nod acknowledgement or no. If people, okay, out of the synopsis that we just gave back. Putting the ball back in the developer's court, the the property owner, that what the commission is looking for is. You know, kind of what I had summed up or let them take a stab at it themselves.
I think I would like to see what those, what the, what kind of density those kinds of zoning changes would would make. Um, you know, if if it remained at RU eighty. Are we talking up there? RU forty, what are we talking? RU twenty, what are we talking?
You mean, how many buildings?
Well, yeah, I mean, what, what, you know, I think we're talking about density, traffic. Households. However, those things translate.
If it's RU eighty, that's twenty, you could put twenty houses approximately. You'd have to subtract the open space, ten percent, take ten percent.
In route.
That would be a little less than eighteen. Guess it would come out to about eighteen houses.
And those would all be analyses that we would look to have the property owner do.
Oh, yeah. But that's approximately what we're talking. Double that if you want the RU twenty, I mean, RU forty. So that, that's the density. Maybe, yeah, I don't know.
What's the zoning of Ledge Land right now, Ledge Land Drive?
Oh, God.
It's.
That's RU twenty.
Yeah, it's RU twenty. The rest of Field Crest area is RS twelve. Ledge Land is RU twenty.
I think the thing that kept Ledge Land not seeming particularly dense was the terrain. Limited how easy it was to. To uh put houses in there. Were slapped and you could put a grid that that would be much denser.
That was also an open space subdivision, so we got a bit of open space out of that.
Right.
And if you have open space subdivision, then you could pick the area you wanted to actually have an instruction take place in, right? Make it easier.
Well, that would seem like the way to go up there and complement the open space that's already up there. Now, I I, I don't know if you're. Some of the places in town that, you know, Bluff Point is is heavily used. I mean, that, there is a Haley Farm, same thing. The, these kinds of areas are in demand. And it's what makes living in Groton great, you know, it's, we've got something that a lot of towns don't have.
A lot of traffic.
Protected at some level.
It looks like. That area between Oral School Road and Cal Hill. You know, where Cal Hill is already also RU twenty right now, I mean, R twenty.
Let's say.
So it's already good to go. R twenty. So maybe it's a. It's R twenty or maybe the mix is what makes more sense instead. We already have Oral School, the Cal Hill being R twenty. If it's a R forty where east of Oral School Road, what it's now about there. That'll add quite a bit because we already, this doesn't make much of a change. Certainly would blend with what you have because so much that you already have, it just isn't built out. And if in fact you wanted to develop the area between Cal Hill and Oral School Road, if you were a smart developer to put it in there, you'd have to put in a road. That's the way to develop it. Work for Ledge Land.
What it, what are you thinking now? RU twenty?
I'm thinking west of. It already is R twenty.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah, no, I realize that. And maintain that.
Then R forty on the other side.
Maintain property.
Right. It wouldn't seem like that much of a change. It would still be less dense on the other side. For how many houses or units that we'd put on Oral School Road, which I'm still not crazy about, but. Make sure it's open to the idea that that allows development at the R twenty level. Between Oral School Road and Cal Hill, which would mandate if we put any kind of road structure in there, that it would catch.
But it sort of sounds like we have a consensus then.
Would the institutional sort of stuff still be allowed in the RU forty?
It's, 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 it's limited to the items that Sue had called out. You know, there are daycares that are allowed, um assisted living. There are some things by special permit that are allowed in the RU zones.
Or sort of, it's. I didn't think there was much of a change so by size of the. Zone.
You know, the table just calls out RU. If allowed in the RU zone. Without regard to twenty, forty, eighty.
Yeah, I thought it was even broken down. Yeah, that's right. It's just RU. So it doesn't make any difference of the size of the. Lots of. So I think, I guess we have a a sort of consensus of that. Does that? Answer your questions, John, or do you want?
Oh, I I think that's good.
Was there any reason to have another workshop or we, I think we're done with the workshops.
I think you're done with the workshop, John.
I don't know if the developer wants to meet with us sometime or not.
I I I think they certainly would. I don't know with the, the right venue, if uh. If it's a workshop, if it's a regular meeting, you know, I know as a property owner and um having the option on the property. They certainly want to discuss some options for the development there, so, you know, that's something. Or that they wanted to meet with the commission. And whether you wanted to do that in a workshop format, uh at a regular meeting, when you wanted to do it. Whether you wanted to do it this Thursday night and get some feedback from them, or if you wanted to do it um sometime in the future.
I don't know if it's a good idea to do it in a workshop or we should just.
It would seem like that would be a little premature. I think anybody would want to think about, you know, if the developer's gonna. Come up with some ideas or some.
I don't think this, what, this Thursday is would be.
No, that wouldn't seem uh.
No.
Practical.
I would think they, we, they could come to us uh in a regular meeting, like a presentation.
But too quickly, then the presentation will be trying to talk us out of this. A presentation where they can say, here's what that would look like. Here's what I would then propose or something like that. Based on what we're coming, what we think we're coming up with, not trying to come up with the reasons why we should come up with something else.
I think as public as it could be, as Jeff indicates, in in one of our normal meetings, would more, would be much more appropriate.
Oh, I, yeah.
Not a workshop.
No, I I I don't think it's right in a workshop. If they had an application with us, that would.
That's right. Oh, yeah, I think that Hal, Hal, you've got a point that brings back Star Street when you, you know, and you, you, I know that you've predicted that on other applications is that. Sometimes things don't uh. End up looking like you had hoped. And I think I, and I, I think we want to avoid that. You know, or you're given the worst case. It's a workable site. It's just a matter of, you know, can it work within the constraints of what Groton needs?
I don't think it, yeah, if it's slow density, it's not going to have that much impact on the community.
But I think it'll be appropriate.
No, it.
It seems like it would be appropriate for that area.
It's not damaging. I guess it's maybe, it doesn't have a negative impact. Which overdevelopment could be. I I think we should do it at a regular meeting. Presentation and no decision.
Yeah, no, presentation and no decision.
Yeah, but it'd be different if they had an application. I, I don't have a. Yeah, but it'd be different if they had an application, I, I don't have a problem with trying to work on something like that. Once they have an application. All right, so. If no one, does anyone have anything else to bring up, or any other thoughts?
No.
You read it well, Jeff.
I think then, then we can, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
Make the motion to adjourn. Different outcome than what I expected.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Hey, good practice.
Thanks, good night.
Thanks, everybody, good night.
Bye.